Speak in front of the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the clerk. And just for everybody's information, we're actually going to do the public comments at the end of the presentations, okay? But make sure you turn in a blue speaker card if you'd like to speak. We're also going to add a significant exposure to litigation, government code section 549-56.9B. We have one case that we're going to add for a urgency item to our closed session tonight, so can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Platt?
Here.
Councilmember Rigby?
Here.
Councilmember Rush will be marked absent. Mayor Protem Lorimer?
Here.
Mayor Tesari?
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Tesari, that was to add the closed session item to the agenda.
Yes.
Question, do we need to have a vote on that?
Two at that? That was the vote. It was a roll call. It was a roll call.
For the record, we can...
Let's do it again.
Yes. Can we have a motion, please?
Just in case. Yeah, I'll move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush will be marked absent. Mayor Protem Lorimer?
Yes.
Mayor Tesari?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, tonight's invocation will be presented by Pastor Ken Castro of Calvary Chapel Eastvale.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening Pastor Castro.
I was asked to fill in, I believe, one of the acting pastors, their child had a birthday. Nobody wanted his birthday cake or presents. My name is Ken Castro from Calvary Chapel Eastvale. You know, isn't it so easy to criticize someone versus pray for them, praise them? Tonight, we're going to be meeting here with the city council, and we're going to be going over old news, current news, and new business. If you look in this really quick, if anybody has had a chance to go through the agenda, there's recommendations after recommendations after recommendations, and this board is going to go through them. They may not be fully 100% aware of exactly everything that's going on, and would it be neat to have these gentlemen fully 100% knowledgeable of every aspect of these recommendations? They need some guidance, and that's what I'd like for you to join me in, asking my Lord Jesus to give these gentlemen guidance as they operate tonight's meeting. Every moment is coming for you right now. We left off this meeting to you, Lord. Let everyone here tonight, Father, I pray and ask that you just have your peace upon each and every member of your worship tonight, Lord. I pray for the city council, that they would be able to discuss each and every item that is up for vote, up for old news, current and new news, and all these recommendations, Father. I pray and ask that you give them guidance and direction. I pray and ask that they would agree with a unity, Lord, to put the city before their needs, Father. I pray and ask that they realize that they as well have someone to be accountable to, Father, the Lord and Jesus, if they ask.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Item three was supposed to be, actually, before I go, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would love to.
All right.
Please stand. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Rigby. Is Assemblymember Cervantes here?
No.
No? All right, we're going to move to item three point, or actually, 3.2, Red Ribbon Proclamation. At this time, I'd like to invite Michael Castillo and the Red Ribbon Committee to join the council and myself at the speaker's podium. Michelle, yes.
The city of Eastville is pleased to proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2017, as Red Ribbon Week. It's the goal of Red Ribbon Week to, and the city, to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign to establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal frauds. I would like to present this proclamation to the... Yeah, I would like to present this proclamation to the Red Ribbon Committee and thank the Red Ribbon Committee for Eastvale, Rock Creek, New York. Thank you, gentlemen. (APPLAUSE)
enforcement agent brigade Camarino was burdened by drug accidents. The Red Ribbon has became a symbol of hope behind grassroots efforts to protect children and adults from dangers of alcohol and other drug use. In support of the Red Ribbon's celebration, we invited the Red Ribbon Family Festival. (APPLAUSE)
Next, the city of Eastville is pleased to proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2017, as fire prevention. The 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Every Second Counts," planned two ways out, as we've seen a lot of the consequences of how they are attracting people on to work right now. The city was created to educate the public about the value of work, developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the house. This proclamation is important to the community as our region and state continues to be impacted by wildfire season. And so I'd like to present this proclamation to the head of the department's office of Cal Fire and thank the person continuing to make the city of Eastvale a top priority. Thank you. (APPLAUSE) Chad began his career with the Sheriff's Department in May of 2005, and he's a report veteran. In August of 2014, he was assigned as a school resource officer for Eleanor Roosevelt High School. As a school resource deputy, Sergeant Thompson fostered positive relationships with several staff, I'd say all of the staff, faculty, and students. He gave humorous presentations to parents and students on various topics, including internet safety, anti-bullying, gangs, and the danger of drugs. Sergeant Thompson also is part of the first mentorship program in which he volunteers for better foster jobs. He's conducted several red assessments in schools and businesses with the city and received the department's medal of merit, which involved a case on campus. Sergeant Thompson was promoted to sergeant in September of this year, so his arm still hurts from getting picked up. And he will be reassigned to the Sheriff's Lake Elsinore Station. So, I can really attest to this guy, he did an awesome job, probably the best school resource officer we've had at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. There's some big issues to fill, I'm hoping that his replacement does just a small job and hopefully he'll consult with the owner of his daddy's student to play it out. Sergeant Thompson, congratulations. Thanks, my pleasure. (APPLAUSE)
Mr. Mayor, if I may introduce our new school resource officer now, if that would be appropriate? The deputy with the big feet to fill those shoes is here tonight. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to introduce to you Deputy Jeffrey Scott, who's our newly assigned school resource officer, assigned to Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Deputy Scott has been with the department for five years and has worked assignments and corrections, as well as working in the patrol at the Colorado River Station, which is a nice fancy word for blithe. He was chancered to the West End and has worked at the Hoopa Valley Station since November of 2016. We hand-selected Deputy Scott for this position because we knew that it was going to be a difficult position to fill based on the deputy who is leaving, and we have complete confidence that he's going to do an outstanding job for us. Deputy Jeffrey Scott.
Next, we have a certificate of recognition. The city is pleased to recognize and commend Jared Perez for his service as a code enforcement volunteer for September 2016 and 2017. Jared volunteers his time to the code enforcement department every week on Mondays, Wednesdays, and weekends. He's accompanying staff on inspections, providing support in report writing, note-taking, or in contact with the public. He also assisted with weekend side improvement detail and special events. Jared was instrumental in implementing the sign release procedure within the code enforcement department and is still using it today. Jared, thank you for your dedication in preserving and improving residential neighborhood in Eastvale. Thank you very much. (APPLAUSE) One more, and we're going to move on to the Assemblyman. Another certificate of recognition. The city is pleased to recognize and commend Gilbert Rodriguez for his services as a code enforcement volunteer from January 2017 to September 2017. Gilbert volunteered his time at the code enforcement department every other Tuesday and weekend, and he assisted with weekend side improvement detail and special events throughout the city. Gilbert was also instrumental in dealing with shopping carters who was dealing with illegal dumping favorites. So Gilbert, thank you for your dedication and your service in improving our environment in Eastvale. Thank you. (APPLAUSE) We're going to move on to Assemblymember Sabrina Cervantes. She's going to bring us a legislative update.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening with you. So I have a slide presentation that will go along, might be helpful for those in the audience to follow. But just a few weeks ago, I ended my first year of a two-year legislative session, so I'm officially back home here on recess, out in the community. I'm going to highlight a few of my legislative highlights, as well as a few community events coming up. Perhaps some of you may want to attend, or others within the city. But this year alone, I introduced 14 pieces of legislation, eight of which went to the governor's desk. Four of these bills actually have just been signed by the governor, and we are still waiting for more. He hasn't took the 15th to sign the bills or veto. One of the bills that I'd like to highlight that he signed is dealing with military spouses. As we know, many know, the teacher profession is one of the most common professions amongst military spouses, and we are actually facing a teacher shortage here in the state of California. So this is one way we thought we could assist this dilemma that is occurring here, and also allow our military families to find some stability, find employment here in the state. I'm very honored that the governor felt the need for this, and this is now effective and is law. We are allowing teachers to come in from other states. They have to be married to an active duty member, and they have to be credentialed in another territory or state, and it would allow their application to be reviewed within seven days. The next bill I'd like to highlight is dealing with our veteran service organizations. Throughout this process, we found that many of our veterans have been getting, unfortunately, I'll use the word again, many veterans are not receiving the resources that they should be receiving. So what we want to do, we want to highlight those organizations that are actually doing the great work in servicing our veteran families. So this bill will create a legitimate, will create an organization through Cal Vet, our department, to certify legitimate organizations to provide services to our veterans. It will also create a competitive grant process to allow those organizations to actually get grant dollars from the state. The next bill I'd like to highlight is dealing with our small business community. Riverside County has over 100,000 small businesses, and so if I wanted to, but I can, I come from a family of small business owners, so I understand the need to retain these businesses here in California. One of my bills is 1553, dealing with grant capital access to loan programs. So it would make changes to capital access programs that enable more small businesses to access funding to upgrade properties related to APA guidelines. Currently, the limit is $1 million for businesses to qualify in gross annual receipts. We're increasing that to $5 million in total gross annual income, so that we allow more businesses to apply for this pot of money. And we've heard many great responses from our chamber community, many businesses within the chambers that are very pleased with the bill that I just mentioned. We go back there, this is the bill right here. The next bill that the governor signed, my fourth bill, is 8,200, dealing with disability and resource connection programs. So this is actually something Riverside County already offers to our disability community, our aging community, but other counties throughout the state do not. I actually just went on a hearing in San Jose, my colleague oversees the aging committee, I was a part of, and I spoke about the long-term supportive care services and the lack thereof. And so we want to make sure that we're connecting the different resources that are provided from the state to down to our local level, and really helping caregivers, caregivers, older adults and persons with disabilities to access long-term supportive service programs. So this is another bill that the governor signed. Now moving on to some highlights, I'd like to just briefly mention, I know many of you have, were involved with some of the big pieces of legislation I called from our city manager to many of our mayor and our council members, who really had thoughtful discussions on what was happening in Sacramento. One of them was dealing with the vehicle license restoration, and this was a huge win, not just for the city of Eastvale, for the city of Hoopa Valley, but this was a huge win for Riverside County, the four newest cities that are right here in our backyards. And so I just, first off, want to thank our council members for really being at the forefront of this issue, and our city officials, because when Senator Raff and I first came in, this was a priority, and we wanted to ensure that we met the needs of our communities. With this funding, we're now able to provide, you are now able to provide critical public safety dollars, services, and community benefit programs. Along with this, I want to highlight what we did for our local community college here. As many of you may have heard, I come from an extensive history of military, rich military family, and my family has actually served in all levels of the armed services with the exception of one. And so what we wanted to do is provide services, the best services that we can, right here at Norco College for veteran students. Norco College is actually a leading example. Right now, we want to continue that nationally. What we were able to do is secure $2 million for a new veterans resource center at Norco College, the first of its kind funding, and on top of that, the state, the legislature approved $5 million of ongoing funding for community colleges across the state through a grant, competitive grant process. Norco College was the only college to actually receive $2 million in one-time funding. So we're going to actually have a hearing that I'll speak about, just a little after this, so that I can give you a little update on what's occurring with that. I know that many of you have to travel in and off of the 91 to 60, and traffic is, could be a big headache at times, and we have to deal with traveling into Orange County and how, you know, the traffic congestion does impact the daily lives of all of us. One of the ways that we were able to address this is by bringing critical projects right here to our communities. Just behind us, as many of us enter on and off, by midnight going on to the 15, one of those projects is what we delivered $48 million state funding for. Through this project, we're going to widen and upgrade that long ramp, which I believe is absolutely critical and necessary. The other, many of you travel into Norco, we are also doing a grade separation project there for $6 million, and there's three other projects throughout my district in which we're addressing grade separation. There has been, really unfortunately, there has been deaths on some of these roads, and we need to make sure that these get addressed sooner rather than later, so that we can save lives and that we can have better roads, making sure that we have our public safety folks that are from our fire department or police department that are traveling on safe roads as well. These infrastructure projects keep our industry and regional advantage strong, which is why, you know, we're honestly really proud that we're able to bring this type of funding to western Riverside County. The other issue I did want to, actually, not issue, but actually, right here is a really good highlight of the projects that I just mentioned. This can be gathered in the back of the room, there's a pamphlet that was made by RCTC that lays out all the projects within this, my district, the 60th Assembly District. And for more details, you can always reach out to my office, RCTC, and I'm sure the city could also provide you more information as well. Coming up, I want to highlight some of the events this Saturday. I have a community health fair, and this will be over in Hoopa Valley. I am partnering with Reach Out. It's going to take place at Mission Plaza. Some of you might have received this information, but we do have a flyer in the back of the room. You can get more information about that. The next one is a pet adoption right here in our own city of Eastvale, on the 21st, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. And the other, let me see, I have a Veterans Resource Program coming up. This is the resource center that I was talking about earlier. I am actually the chair of the Select Committee on Veterans Employment and Education, and so we're having a hearing this day, October 25th, from 1:30 to 3:30. I would invite you out to come participate in the hearing. You're going to hear from veteran students at Norco College. You're going to hear from faculty members, from the president, many other industry folks in the business, or in our business world that are actually hiring veterans. And so I would encourage you to come out and join us for a good discussion. Shortly after that, we will have a unveiling, a project unveiling of the new Veterans Resource This, later this month, the Senator and I, along with Congressman Mark Chacano and Assemblymember Jose Medina, will be holding a veterans recognition program at Orange Air Force Base. Currently, we are the, we are accepting recommendations of folks that should be recognized, and our offices are putting this together as an annual event to honor our veteran community throughout all of our districts, which encompasses all of western Riverside County. So just very quick, I want to also just end with stating that my office just got relocated. We moved closer to the central corona, not too far from here. We get there, we start jumping on the freeway, which is sometimes great, depending on the time of the day you're traveling. We are right off Main Street by the metro link station, right across from the central city center, if you're familiar with that area. Our office is open Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. I would encourage you to drop by. You can not need the equipment to see myself or my staff. Sometimes I'm outrunning around in the community, so if you'd like to meet with me personally, please contact my office. We can certainly make sure that we get a time in. I know that I've met with many of the council members already, and I just appreciate the time, able to give you a quick update, and I look forward to continuing to work together as we head into the next year of our legislative session.
Thank you, Assemblymember Cervantes. Appreciate the update.
Any questions? I want to make sure...
Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions, guys?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item six, the consent calendar.
Has there been any requests to pull any items? Mayor Protem?
Yes, I'll need to recuse myself from item 6.4. And we also need to...
Yeah. Dan, before we move on to that, let's go ahead and do our student liaison report. Go ahead, Oscar. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. Ronald Reagan Elementary is hosting their annual fall festival this Friday, October 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The next week, on next week, Wednesday, October 18th, Tracks B, C, and D will be recognized at the awards assembly. The Great Shakeout, the district-wide disaster drill, will prepare students on Thursday, October 19th, as well for the month. As for the month of November, What If Week will be held through the week of November 13th through the 17th. Reagan student, Ronald Reagan students will have their winter boutique from December 11th to the 15th, and on the 14th, students will have the opportunity to have cookies with Santa from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Eastvale Elementary 4th graders had their field trip this past Monday, attending the World Kindness Conference at Crossroads Church in Corona. Mother's Sun Lua will be this Friday, October 13th, in the multipurpose room. Track conferences will begin Thursday, October 19th, with Track C and D beginning Monday, October 23rd, with minimum days. Red Ribbon Week, the Red Ribbon Week, the Red Ribbon Week, the Red Ribbon Week, the Red Ribbon Week will begin on October twenty-third and finish on the thirty-first. The theme will be "Your Future Is Key, Stay Drug-Free." The month of October will end with trimester one, trimester one awards. Clara Barton Elementary fourth graders had an amazing time as well at the World Kindness Conference, and Barton students are ready for their Harvest Festival on October twentieth. River Heights Intermediate joined the International Walk last week, and will have their What If Week from October twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. Students are encouraged to wear colors every week, Monday students will wear pink for What If We Found A Cure For Cancer, Tuesday will be red for What If Everyone Had Enough Food Every Day. Students are also encouraged to bring canned food items to their second periods, food items will be donated to the settlement house. Wednesday will be orange for What If Everyone Was Treated With Kindness and Compassion. Thursday will be blue, What If Everyone Had A Hero. Friday will be green, What If Everybody Was Recognized For Their Unique Talents. Eastville, the Eastville community is also invited to the annual Doctor Augustine Ramirez vs. River Heights basketball games on Monday, November sixth, beginning at four P.M. at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Thank you, any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment about the, just you briefly went over the kindness conference that was just recently. Being a parent of a child that recently attended that, I think it was an amazing event. If you aren't aware of that, residents, contact the school district, find out a little bit more about it. Like I said, just coming from a parent, my daughter coming back, the stuff she shared with me not only affects her, but it affected our whole family, so it was a great event.
Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. All right, we're going to go ahead and remove six point four from the consent calendar. Let's go ahead and do a vote on that one.
Can we have a motion first, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
From which item?
Six point four.
Six point four. Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
All right, I'd move to approve the rest of the consent calendar.
Second.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lorremore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, at this time, we'll conduct one public hearing item. Ms. Rodriguez, item seven.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. The item before you is a recommendation to approve the resolution, which is to increase the fees and charges for pickup and hauling services, street sweeping services, recycling, and green waste provided by Waste Management. You have the staff report in front of you, but just to paraphrase, we started negotiations with Waste Management in early March of 2017. There were some initial proposals for a rate increase of, I believe the aggregate was a four point eight seven increase to the rate payer. Recognizing that that was a tremendous increase to the rate payer, we went back with Waste Management, addressed our concerns as a committee with both Councilmember Rigby and Councilmember Platt, along with City Manager Nissen and Waste Management staff and myself, and kind of just let them know that the proposed increase was, was too much, and that we were not in favor of that, we would not be recommending that increase to council. Over the course of April, May, June, and July, we met multiple times, including correspondence via email, phone calls, and in-session meetings, to negotiate a lower rate for the rate payer. During that course, we made a few recommendations to them, or I should say requests, one of the requests is that we go back from the, what we call the Waste Sewer and Trash Index, which is just a way to gauge some of the rate increases, back to what's called a Consumer Price Index, a CPI, as it's projected to have a lower rate increase than what was originally proposed, which Waste Management was amenable to. We also requested that no retroactive or additional charges be incurred during the delay. During, if you look at our franchise agreement, it's recommended that we bring these items to council in July, June or July for approval, but because of the, our non-agreements to the rate increase, we had to delay it a little bit, so we didn't want our rate payers nor the city to incur any additional costs as a cause of delay to that due to the negotiations. And then the, the last thing was a potential negotiation for the increase of franchise fees, or at least the discussion of it, without increasing the cost to the rate payer as well. Upon our request to Waste Management, they submitted yet another proposal to us, which is in your packet, and we brought down the proposed increase of originally four point eight seven, down to a two point zero five increase, which is pretty consistent with the previous years of twenty fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. I do have those numbers, if you'd like to see those numbers as well, as to what the increase has been over the past several years, but we brought it down essentially two point eight three percent. It has to be understood and known that these rates are to be expected as per our franchise fee, I'm sorry, our franchise agreement with Waste Management, as a result of the CPI, which is national, the Riverside County tipping fees, and the green waste disposal laws, and any additional laws that might be coming down from the state of California, including AB eighteen twenty-six, and there's, there's a myriad of laws that are coming down that are unfunded mandates from the state to the local government that we're required to enforce, but without funding. So there are anticipated to be some increases over the years, but we did our very best to negotiate these rates down. I'm happy to answer any question, as well as City Manager Michelle Nissen, and I also have Glenda Chavez here from Waste Management that would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions? You guys worked it out?
Yeah, I just have one question, just clarification, just to make sure that this is just a rate adjustment and not an adjustment on the length of our current contract.
Correct, the length of our current contract is still intact, which identifies June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as the end of the agreement. Right now, we're currently in annual extensions, that was paraphrased in the parameters of the agreement as of twenty seventeen. So this is just the rate increase, this has nothing to do with the contract extension or franchise free, franchise fee negotiations.
Just kind of for the, for the benefit of the public, we are currently going through also just the, considering that we're about four years out till the next renewal, we are going through ongoing negotiations as far as the next, just trying to get obviously a better rate, and also to mitigate some of the customers' fees, meaning the residents of Eastville, so we're in the process of still working that out back and forth, and we got some time, again, because our contract has not come up for, I believe, another four years, so we're in the process of working that out as well.
Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we received one public comment card from Ray Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez.
Mayor Tesari, just, just for a point of clarification, the franchise fee agreement with Waste Management does entitle them and outline that they are allowed, per the agreement, to be seeking CPI and a rate increase. We felt that renegotiating a franchise agreement was an independent discussion from what our agreement currently entitles them to do. So that, that is why what you have before you this evening is, is simply one part of a much larger discussion.
No, I'm glad we were able to get together and work it out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you guys for the work you put in. Mr. Hernandez, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Councilman, Mayor, Ray Hernandez, Eastville. Couple of questions, you answered most of my questions, so now I have to say my hand. My main question is, can I just learn about the price increase on the gender looking and the computer website? And I was kind of disappointed that there was only a minimal legal requirement to inform the residents to press enterprise issues. I felt that with any price increase, we should better communicate to our residents when we come, maybe some people wouldn't want to hear this. That's all I have to say on that stuff, is my, better communication. Again, my, my questions are pretty much answered by you, thank you very much. Just one thing I'd like to add, the good thing about this is, I went to the website and there's forty-two pages of this contract, I haven't had any, by the time I got to about twenty, so I don't know if I learned anything, but I did see one thing, there's some kind of light at the top, that seniors receive a ninety percent discount. Now, I don't know how the seniors are in this room, but I'm one, and I was happy to order that. You do have to apply for it to get paid for it.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Any other speaker cards?
That concludes public comment.
All right, any questions?
I'd like to move approval of this item.
Second.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lorremore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item eight, council business. Eight point one, amendment number one to the annual on-call miscellaneous maintenance services contract, MCE Corporation. Mr. Indal.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, council members, good evening. The report before you is amendment to contract that the city council let out to MCE Corporation in nineteen, I'm sorry, in twenty sixteen. This is the contract to the maintenance of the city, payment, you know, signage, and all those sort. If you remember, last year, the council approved the crew of staff to solicit third-party contracts in lieu of the county, who's been providing the services for about six years or so. This year, MCE has approached the city because the state prevailing wage has increased about two percent, so the amendment to the contract is just to do that. However, at the same time, staff also has included an additional services to be proactive in our maintenance approach and program. So far, what we have done is that we have received a lot of e-citizens reporting on the sidewalk, lifting the trip hazard, you know, potholes and trees and all those things, and we responded to the, to the request, and then we sent MCE and the crew to the field to make some corrections. But this year, sometime in July, on June or July, staff has proposed to increase the services to a second day, and the second day is basically, is a more proactive measure, so instead of reactive to the questions and complaints from the citizens and residents, all we do is that we divided the city boundaries, the property into four zones, and every week MCE would go around looking at deficiency in public safeties, in public and public facilities. And then the second day, what they do after they make connection, notes, they would do the corrections, and maybe the following week, depending on the type of work that they have to do. Just by doing this, we have seen some improvements, and also, I just want to report to the city council, the budgeted amount for MCE of sixteen seventeen is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and yet, the expenditure of last year is sixty-one thousand dollars, so way less than what's budgeted amount. Historically, since in cooperation, we have paid the county for this kind of services about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So there's quite a cost savings, and also increased quality of the, of the maintenance. So before you tonight, there's a maintenance agreement, that is, we call it amendment number one, for your approval, staff is available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any speaker cards?
We've received none.
Councilman Platt?
Yeah, real quick, on the, thank you, Mr. Mayor, on the, so I understand this is a two-year agreement, and there's actually, there's three, basically three attempts to one-year renewals, consecutive renewals?
Yes, sir.
Will this be, after the two-year agreement, will this be approached back to the, to the council to renew for the automatic one-year?
Yes, sir.
Or just, are we just going to look through the three, three consecutive one-year auto renewals?
Yes, sir, this is just within the first two years, so we haven't exhausted the first two years, so the next year, at the end of two year, we're going to go back to the council for extension of one year.
And the reason why I say that, I just want to assess their performance in the two years, to make sure that we're getting the best service we can possibly get, and so, and, and, you know, one thing too, is I do understand the CPI increase, and that's really, you know, in California, the prevailing wage has constantly gone up, and it is difficult for, you know, for private contractors to be able to do that, so this increase is actually not too bad, so it's, you know, and it's far within our budget, so, yeah, I'm fine with that. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lorremore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, we'll move on to item eight point two, completion of construction contract for fire station number thirty-one, Horizons Construction Company International, and it'll be Bob Williamson, our construction manager.
Good evening, I'm the mayor and member of the city council, Bob Williamson, your construction manager. This particular item concerns fire station thirty-one and the construction contract with Horizons Construction Company International. It recommends that you accept the project as complete, authorize the city manager, I'm sorry, the city clerk, to file a notice of completion for the fire station in Riverside County, and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documents. Just to give you a notice, or I'm sure you reviewed the report, but also that report is the county, if you will, the amount spent so far on the project, the budget, et cetera. Currently, the project is significantly under budget. The Horizons people finished the project, effectively substantial completion on February two thousand seventeen, the police moved in effectively, or the fire moved in effectively on March first, and we've been operating under that station ever since. This request here is a statutory requirement by state law, made of the five elements of completion, in order for any subcontractors to notify us of their needs, which they may have in the project. I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Do we have any speaker cards?
We've received none.
All right.
Just a quick comment, thank you for your help on this, and your leadership and management through this project, I mean, it's, it's a project that the city looks to, especially our, our first building that we've completed as a city, so thank you.
Hopefully, many more in the future.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully. We'll see how this one goes. So far, so good.
I'd like to move that we accept the fire station.
I'll second.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lorremore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, I'd like to pull eight point three, since that was submitted by Councilman Rush, who's not here, and move on to eight point four, regional streetlight acquisition program submitted by the city manager.
Just, just for clarification, eight point three, is that being postponed?
Till next meeting, like the last one.
Or just being pulled?
It's, if I may, Mayor Tesari and council members, this item, eight point three, was specifically requested by Councilmember Adam Rush, and because he is ill this evening, we, we had recommended continuing it to the next meeting, so that he may hear the agenda item that he personally requested.
We'll continue it.
Thank you, sir.
Do we need a motion or a vote on that? Do we need a vote on that, or is that okay? Okay, thank you. Go ahead with eight point four, please.
Good evening, mayor and council members, this item before you this evening is a regional streetlight acquisition program update. This item was specifically requested by Councilmember Rigby at the last city council meeting. The city staff, our special legal counsel, and Councilmember Rigby, and Councilmember Platt have been reviewing and attempting to develop a mutually agreed upon terms with Eurupa Community Services District to transfer the Southern California Edison accounts for streetlights to the city of Eastvale. Just by way of background for the members of the public that are here, the streetlights throughout the city of Eastvale that are within our boundaries are, are funded through, what's called an LMD, it's a lighting maintenance district. This is something that our residents pay for on their property taxes. That money is going to Eurupa Community Services District, and they, if you, if you will, they're kind of like a custodian of those funds. They do not own the streetlights. Southern California Edison owns the streetlights, and those streetlights were actually installed by most of the developers here throughout the city of Eastvale. As part of their project, they are conditioned to provide streetlights. So they pay for them, they fund them, and then they turn over the asset, it's sell- So they pay for them, they fund them, and then they turn over the asset itself for ownership to Southern California Edison. And the operation and maintenance is funded through the LMD which citizens pay for on their property taxes. So roughly two and a half years ago, Western Riverside Council of Government, WRCog, had proposed a street, a regional streetlight acquisition program that would allow cities to acquire their own streetlights and take control, ownership, and participate in this effort in a regional manner and bring down the, the cost on operating this. Because WRCog found that this was one of the largest expenses to other cities in the region was paying for these streetlights. We have a very unique situation here in the city of Eastvale in that JCSD was given custodian rights to these streetlights prior to the city's incorporation. And this was something that is outlined in their, their LAFCO agreement that, that streetlight, streetlights is a service that they could provide. Now that we are a city, we, we do see some, some benefit in, in being able to control that asset. And all of these streetlights are in the public right-of-way, which is property of the city of Eastvale. So that's just some, some background for all of our residents that are here this evening. So, you know, WRCog came out with this program, we're interested, we want to see the cost decrease and also allow us to have some, some control over these streetlights that would allow us to do things that we current can't, can't currently do, such as creating a smart city network. That is the big obstacle. Also, I'm sure you've heard from some of your constituents, why don't we have, you know, holiday banners throughout the city? Why don't we have, you know, why can't we expand the military banner program? All of those type of, of issues are, are a struggle for us because we don't own the streetlights. Everything has to be approved by Southern California Edison and JCSD because they are, they are custodian of the funds that pay for those assets, the, the electricity and maintenance. So we are a member agency of WRCog and we had expressed interest in participating in this regional acquisition program. Being that JCSD is a custodian, they have also been part of this equation. We, we have been working with JCSD to try to find some terms that are mutually agreeable. The city had a, we were directed at, at a joint meeting between the city of Eastvale council and the JCSD board of directors to, at the staff level, come up with a memorandum of understanding and some terms. During that joint meeting, staff of both agencies were given direction to negotiate the terms. But the main sticking point, if you will, is a request that JCSD, and I'm going, I'm going to quote what was in their staff report, JCSD be allowed to use any poles that JCSD may need to use in the future through a no-fee license agreement with the city in exchange for JCSD giving up ownership of the poles to the city. Just for clarification again, those poles are currently owned by Southern California Edison. So JCSD originally wanted, had expressed interest in forty to fifty poles. I understand, you know, they don't know what the future holds, what their future needs may be, but they would like to have access to some of these poles. I, I understand their position, but, but there is a cost incurred to the city. And, and that's what staff is seeking direction from the council. The MOU is attached, there's several drafts of the MOU between JCSD and the city of Eastvale. The most recent MOU from JCSD is requesting fifteen hundred poles. I, I'm not sure where the, the number came from, except to state that, that they're trying to, in some way, kind of quantify and anticipate a, a future need. We currently, in the city of Eastvale, according to our most recent meeting with WRCog regarding our streetlights, there are little over four thousand streetlights in the city of Eastvale proper. And when I say proper, I, I'm referring to within our city's boundaries. This does not include lights that are in shopping centers and it does not include lights that are in the parks, inside the parks. So there is a fee for us to acquire these poles from Southern California Edison. And there's also a fee for retrofitting, which is another main reason that we wish to acquire these poles. We want to see them retrofitted to LED instead of the LS one that they are right now, which is not a very good quality of light. Technology has advanced significantly over the years and LED provides a much more pure light with, if you're, if you're law enforcement, for example, and you're trying to give a description of, of a potential suspect, you'll get a bigger, accurate color range with an LED light. So this, this does have a public safety component, which is very important to our residents.
Michelle, sorry to interrupt you, just for resident and council clarification on that, the lights are similar to Sixty-Fifth and Sumner, the new lights that we just put in, that we're trying to get throughout the whole city, so that's an example of it there.
Yes, absolutely. So if you want to see a perfect example of an LED light, we just installed the traffic signal as, as council member Rigby so aptly pointed out at Sixty-Fifth and Sumner. And it's, we've received actually a lot of comments from citizens saying, that's, that's great, what are, are we going to be swapping out all the lights in the city to look like that? And that's what we're trying to do. So to go back, there is a cost of acquiring the poles, there's a cost for retrofitting the poles. And then, of course, there's, there's debt service and O and M, operation and maintenance. But what it boils down to is, is roughly, to acquire all of these poles, these over four thousand poles, we're looking at roughly five point one million dollars. There will be a significant savings at the end of this term, which I can, I can go over with you. But when you boil that down to price per pole, it's about one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars per pole. If JCSD were to, if the council wishes to agree to the fifteen hundred poles that JCSD is seeking, that's roughly one point nine million dollars. And that does not cover the cost of pole replacement, which we do need to factor that in. And at some point, these poles will age out and will need to be replaced. And, and it does not cover the cost of a knockdown replacement, which we do have about four to six knockdowns a year. So my, my concern with, with that, that I was not comfortable at staff level agreeing to fifteen hundred poles is that there's a one point nine million dollar burden to the city of Eastvale. So we, at staff level, and of course with the, the input and direction of council member Rigby and Todd, excuse me, Rigby and Platt, my apologies, sir, we, we did go back to JCSD and propose two hundred poles. So at this point, staff is, is seeking some direction from council. That seems to be the crux of, of our, our holdup in reaching a, an agreement with JCSD. We are on a time crunch because Southern California Edison has decided they don't want to sell the poles to cities anymore, but if you're already in the pipeline, they'll honor it. And once this moves up to the CPUC for approval, we've got about forty-five days. And apparently, we are next in line to go to the CPUC. And we're expecting that notice any day now, it could, could be tomorrow, could be next week, could be next month. But we do have some time constraints that, that are, we need to be sensitive to. And we need to finalize the agreement with JCSD before we can lock in financing and, and close, close the escrow on the acquisition. It's a lot of information to, to go over and staff can certainly, will, will like to come back to council with a much more detailed presentation on the cash flow assumptions, which we literally just had, our meeting yesterday with, with WRCog staff and their financier. But the main crux again is this fifteen hundred poles. And I would like some direction from council on, on what you're comfortable with. As I mentioned, the MOUs, versions of the MOUs are attached to the staff report and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Joe Endorwan has also been intimately involved in this process as well as Aleah, so happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Platt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Michelle, for the update. I have one comment and then two questions. You know, the one thing I want to kind of make clear is the city's intentions when we do, when we do the, well hopefully we will get the lights, is to retrofit these to an LED light. And for, if you're a resident of Eastvale, it's extraordinarily important to have that. And it's about public safety. And we talk about, you know, re-converting that. On JCSD's side, there hasn't, and since I've been involved since the beginning and council, or councilman Rigby has, there's been no secured intention to say that we're going to convert these to LED from JCSD. It's been the LS one program, which isn't LED. It's important for multiple factors, again, public safety being one. If the city eventually, our current existing cameras that we have in the city throughout the main troops, those cameras perform better under better lighting. I think even to an extent, I mean, not all cameras, but even residential cameras, if you have this lighting, those cameras can, you know, potentially have better performing cameras. You can get better, that's, lighting cameras work together in the hand-in-hand. Just wanted to kind of make that clear, how important this issue is. And since we have the platform to do it and there's residents in here, I'm just going to express that as, it, it should be concerning to every resident here about the city so wanting to take these lights over. With that said, I do have two questions. I know last night, I'll just kind of do it consecutively, you can answer both. Last night, there was a JCSD board meeting and I know it was on the agenda. Just want to see kind of what they discussed, I was not able to attend last night. And then secondly, I forgot my second question, but we can go to the first, I'll remember the second one.
Councilmember Platt, there, yes, there was a JCSD board meeting last night. City engineer Joe Endorwan and myself attended the meeting on behalf of the city. JCSD did have a, an item on their agenda, but it was informational only and it was not pulled for discussion and there was no discussion or direction from their board of directors. It is potentially, it is possible that there was not a discussion because there was one board member absent and another board member resigned at the beginning of the meeting. So, because she moved out of her district, that would be Dr. Joan...
Roberts.
Roberts. So with only three board members present, the item was not pulled for discussion.
I do remember my second question. So I know legal counsel, I think Betsy Martin, who's been kind of a legal advisor through this, they've been going back and forth that JCSD is legal and I can't remember that person's name. Has there, I mean, this has to have been a topic of conversation between the amount of lights, light poles. Have they responded back anyway to our request? Because we've already requested two hundred and that was relatively maybe a couple of weeks ago. Maybe you have the date on it to be specific, but has there been a response from their legal, JCSD's legal counsel in regards to our changes in their MOU?
Yes, sir, there, that's a great question, Mr. Councilmember Platt. And I posed that same question to our special counsel and the answer was no. No response from JCSD.
And just for clarification on that, there were some different versions of our MOU that unfortunately went back and forth that we were not completely clear, clear on, which was the fault of Eastvale, not JCSD. So I think our, our most updated MOU was submitted to JCSD. I was trying to pull it up right now, I think it's about the beginning of October, October third-ish. So I mean, they have not had it, the, the most current MOU, they've not had it as long as we had hoped they'd had, they've had it. So, yeah, and it was, once again, it was, it was just an error in communication between our committee that's, that's working on this.
Correct, so there, there was a bit of a misunderstanding between our direction during our meeting and that of our special counsel. And so the last version, most corrected version of our MOU that was submitted to JCSD was on October fifth. And there has been no response from, from that.
Do we have any speaker cards?
I, I will, I will share that the general manager of JCSD, Todd Corbin, is open to a joint meeting, which, which we have requested. But I do not have a date set yet.
Maybe the direction of councils, can we get that ASAP?
Exactly.
I mean, can we just get that, maybe hash that out, I mean, as soon as we possibly can, you know?
Yes, we, I will follow up with him tomorrow. It was, it was a kind of a side discussion yesterday evening that, that they would be open to a joint meeting. We had requested a joint meeting twice, city of Eastvale, but one was not sufficient notice for JCSD and they did have some board members that had commitments that, that conflicted. And, and then we requested a joint meeting again, which, which was not, the date was not agreeable or terms were not arrived out, so we would like to, we'll try again. But we do have the forty-five days, it's a deadline that we should try to meet before the end of November.
Well, I'd like us to give you some direction in the meantime, just in case we run into that same situation and we don't have a joint meeting. We need to know what you can move with.
So I have a couple of questions and concerns about this, if I may, Mr. Mayor. As city manager mentioned, the cost per pole, which we kind of went over yesterday in a meeting with WRCog that's helping us out, is about twelve hundred and seventy dollars per pole. Even at that two hundred pole amount that they want, that's still about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they're asking us to just give them. And they're, they have no, no end date to using these two hundred, two hundred poles, which they've increased to fifteen hundred. So if we were to go at the two hundred poles, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we were to go at the fifteen hundred poles, it's just under two million dollars just for the acquisition cost of the poles. That's not including operations, maintenance, replacement down the road of the, of the, the lights. The light poles itself, the light poles itself are anywhere from sixty-four hundred to over ten thousand dollars just to replace a single pole. That's another expense that the city would have to incur. Operations and maintenance is just under a dollar per pole per month that we would have to incur. They're also asking for a first right of refusal on that, which concerns me too, without having any designation as to what exact poles that they were looking at. Going back to the two hundred poles, my thought and what I would like to give direction to the council or to the, to staff with a consensus of the, of the council, if I may, is we look at, we have roughly fourteen parks within the, the city that are managed by JCSD. So if we look at providing maybe four poles per park, so we have one pole on each street, kind of, that's roughly about sixty poles or so that they would need, four per park, fourteen parks. And then we talked with a professional that was familiar with the water off-site, what is it, the wireless water?
SCADA? SCADA system?
That thing. It's a system to wirelessly access the water meters. He said that that can go about a half mile. We look at, we're about just under five square miles as our city. So we give them, say, another fifty poles for that, we're at about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty poles. And then we round it up just to help them out for the two hundred poles that we give them. I think anything exceeding the two hundred poles is unnecessary with an expense to the city, which I don't, I don't think we should have to, to pay for that. I even think of the two hundred poles, that that's more than sufficient for them to have for their needs. The other concern that I have is, is with that, how did that jump from two hundred to fifteen hundred? That we need to kind of get direction. That we need to kind of get direction. If they need more than two hundred, then we need some sort of justification rather than just, hey, we need fifteen hundred poles. Item number two that I have is, is like the mayor brought up, is the timeline. Is we were talking with W R C O G yesterday, they said yesterday in our meeting, we could get an email this afternoon saying that, hey, you're in the C P U C, you have forty-five days. So we need to plan as if today, or, I don't think they've received an email today, so we have an extra day maybe. So tomorrow morning is the clock that our forty-five days starts, because we could receive that email anytime. And once that forty-five days starts, we have to have the M O U completely buttoned up. Because once that forty-five days ends, then we start into basically an escrow period where they do all the financing. And W R C O G said, we are not going to move forward with the financing if you don't have an M O U. If we can't move forward with the financing because we don't have an M O U, then I'm afraid that the whole thing could drop. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity that we're able to take part in. If we don't do it now, there's no telling that we'll ever be able to do it ever again.
Maybe. Yeah, and if we don't meet the timeline and it falls through, then, like you just said, there's no other opportunity. But if we give concessions and we get the poles, we can always do something later to enhance our position.
I think the direction, I mean, obviously the either, I think there's two ways to look at it, right? We can obviously get direction from their legal. I think we could go at both ways, get direction from their, their legal, trying to get Betsy Martin, get our legal counsel, Betsy Martin, to reach out to Kim Byrnes, their, their legal counsel, to get a response back simultaneously. Maybe reach out to Todd Corbin. If he verbally said, hey, yeah, we're willing to meet a joint meeting, can we do it as early as possible? You know, by early next week would even be ideal. I mean, any, any thoughts on that? I mean, anything outside of those two things, or?
I'm not as, the joint meeting isn't as important to me. If we can give adequate direction and let them do what they need to do to iron it out.
Yeah.
You know, if we can skip the meeting and still achieve what we need to do, then I would prefer to do that.
We've been stuck on this point for a little while, and that's why we, Councilmember Plot and I have, have asked City Manager to communicate with J C S D for a joint meeting, because we've been stuck on this for so long. So our thought is, is rather than going back and forth, that we need to get everyone in the same room, council, or legal counsel, our council, J C S D board and staff members, and say, okay, let's iron it out right now. Because what's happening is, is we're sending an email, we're waiting a few days, meaning Eastville, we're waiting a few days, maybe even a week or two, and then all of a sudden we're seeing that J C S D, they're waiting a few days, maybe a week or two. And we're, like I said, we're at forty-five days right now. So I think if we're able to alleviate those week or two in-between emails going back and forth, trust me, I hate more meetings than I have to. I don't, I don't want to have to have another meeting if we don't have to. But I just think for us to all get in the same room.
That's important.
And get a better direction. The other fear too is, is with us not being in the, in the same room, if J C S D comes back to us and says we need five hundred poles, I'll be honest, being the committee that we're on for this, I don't feel comfortable without the council's approval giving them five hundred poles. I'd rather us all meet together and the council decide that, yes, we're going to give them X amount of poles. Is my thought.
Councilmembers, want, so to summarize, from the administrative standpoint of the city, our, our objections have been the no fee license agreement. Our other objection has been the term in perpetuity, meaning forever, without end. And the request to, for J C S D to have essentially first, I believe it was first right of refusal on the poles, yes, poles will be available for use on a first come, first served basis. Being that the city is the one, being imposed with this financial burden, I, I, I'm having a hard time with some of those concepts. I, I do think as a, as a goodwill, as a good faith gesture, we, we need to work with our partner agency, J C S D, and we need to find a compromise. I have suggested that we map this all out, that we, you know, as, as Councilmember Rigby had stated, you know, get into a room. We, we, we do have a map, and W R C O G is going to provide us a large format of this map that shows the location of every single streetlight in the city and kind of hammer these details out. But ultimately, the, this is a kind of a policy decision from the council whether you want to absorb that type of a financial expense, or can we arrive at a more amicable, mutually agreeable conditions? I had proposed potentially some kind of a sliding scale on the, on the number of poles and the fee or no fee or reduced fee, some of the things you can, we can consider, because none of us have a, a crystal ball. We don't know what the future holds. We don't know what, what type of, of technology advancements will come that may be beneficial on these poles. And so I, I do think that's where, where J C S D, they're trying to anticipate the unknown, and that may be where the fifteen hundred came up, was just, you know, a number. But I, I think if giving them the opportunity to come back and revisit that maybe, revisit it in certain intervals, one year, three year, five year, I, I'm not sure. Again, this is, this is something that I think the council should, should make that determination, along with the J C S D board. But I'm not in favor of giving up the farm.
We had no speaker cards, right?
I did have one question.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, sir. S B six forty-nine, I appreciate, and that's the not-so-small cellphone towers. That legislation is sitting on the governor's desk. I appreciate that that was lined through on the second one that you guys put forward, that that would negate the agreement if it were signed, because we don't know. But i- if we do have those, if, if we were to move forward with two hundred, and I don't know if we're there, but if we were to move forward with the two hundred, we select which two hundred those are, right? Which ones are ceded to J C S D?
No, I think, I think it would be appropriate for J C S D to give us some, some indication as to which two hundred they would like.
Okay.
I, I don't know, I know they want to have some electronic equipment to read meters so that they don't have to, to do a, a truck that drives by and does the electronic meter reading. So there, there are some technology advancements that they could benefit from, but they, they don't have it mapped out yet. They're, you know, so we're both, both trying to anticipate the future, and it's a bit of a moving target. But I do think it would be wise for, for them to kind of tell us, you know, what, what area, how far apart, you know, tho- those type of decisions. It would be beneficial to them.
Okay. And this is a theoretical question, because this is based on the passage of S B thirty-nine, six forty-nine. But if the governor were to sign it, and these two hundred poles are out there, this bill would allow for cellphone towers to be placed on streetlights wherever, at a fixed rate set by the state. If a telecommunications provider chose one of these poles that was assigned to J C S D, would that mean that J C S D would then get those franchise dollars associated with that, or would it go to the city? Or do we need to work that out?
Mayor Protem Lorimer, that is a fantastic question. We are the, we are the franchise fee, franchisee. We are the ones that hold the franchise agreements with the telecoms, not Euripus Community Services District. So if we own the poles, I would assume that any, any revenue, whether it's small under S B six forty-nine or, or more significant without S B six forty-nine, that would, that would come to us. Now, if J C S D owns the poles and they're, they are the leasing, then, then yes, they would, they would get that portion of the leasing charges. But the, the global franchise agreement is held with the City of Eastville, and those franchise fees come to us, and they're, they're, they're reported as part of our budget.
Councilwoman Plot?
Just kind of one comment on that. Our, our, basically our performa, based on the, the cost savings, kind of in the comment to Councilman Lorimer, is in our performa, in our, in our basically, in our overdraft of the save, cost savings, that really is not even taken into consideration of the saving. Where the savings come from is the conversion to the L E D, which is roughly about eight dollars savings a month per light pole. So you take that, four thousand light poles, it's thirty-three thousand dollars a month in savings. That's where you pay for the, the debt that we would, we would incur. It actually has nothing to do with the revenue that we could get from that. So that's just something that we really couldn't calculate yet, because we have no idea because of six forty-nine. So whatever does happen, yes or no, that revenues doesn't even impact what we already have as a savings. Just want to make that point.
And, and just off of that too, this M O U is not giving them the poles, it's letting them use the poles. So they won't have ownership of the poles, they'll just be able to utilize the poles for banners, whatever they, they want to use the poles for. So thus, to answer your question, since they don't have the ownership of the poles, they wouldn't be receiving any revenue that would be generated from the pole.
Got you.
Just for a point of clarification, J C S D's M O U to us is asking for exclusive use. So the fifteen hundred poles that they were requesting, they're asking, again, that they have exclusive use before even the city. So even though we're bearing the burden of acquisition and retrofit and O N M and et cetera, et cetera, they, they essentially would, by agreeing to that, you're granting them rights in perpetuity, if you, if you agree to the terms of their M O U in perpetuity, exclusive use for no fee. And, and again, that, that's, that's where the sticking point is. Just for, just point of clarification, again, their, W R C O G has done some significant financial modeling on this, which Councilmember Rigby participated in the meeting yesterday. And we do want to bring this back to, to council so that you guys can all hear this very extensive and enlightening education on the cash flow modeling assumptions. But after twenty years, the cumulative net savings is projected to be three point eight million dollars. And that is not including any potential revenue for operational efficiencies that may be gained from streetlight acquisition.
Well, I'd move that we direct staff to engage J C S D and set up, at the most immediate date, a joint session with J C S D's board. So moved?
Second.
Is that, is that clear, though? Is that the direction?
Yes, sir, that's clear, but I, I, I think I would, if we are not able to secure the date, if council could articulate to staff whether or not they support fifteen hundred poles, whether or not you support a no fee license agreement, and whether or not you support in perpetuity.
I would prefer not to give a number, just because you're kind of putting it right out there for them. How about if you engage within negotiations and you can work through the subcommittee?
I, I, I agree not giving a number, but those numbers and those items are not acceptable to me. I don't know about you guys.
It would just be nice to hear back from their legal counsel.
Yeah.
To know.
Yes.
Kind of blind here.
I know.
Okay, we, so we will try again for another joint meeting. But I appreciate your input and direction to staff that we are on the right track with council's position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lorimer?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. Do we have a staff report? Any? No?
I just want to thank everyone that participated in the Fall Festival on Saturday. It was a fantastic event. Again, J C S D did a wonderful job hosting, and I thank staff that were, that were there, working the booth and passing out slices of cake. So thank everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry I couldn't be there.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to excuse myself. I have to travel here and I have to go to Los Angeles Airport for, for a two-week off from, from work. So I apologize for that, I'm going to miss your next meeting, I'm sorry.
It's called a vacation.
That's right.
Just admit it.
Well, safe travels.
Have a great vacation.
Have fun.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, Mayor and council, just a few brief items. We can officially announce now that Costco has signed their lease.
See what you did, Dicky?
So that, that's a, a major milestone. It means that Costco is definitely coming, they're scheduled to come in tomorrow with their full plan submittals of all the construction documents, grading plans, et cetera. And we plan to do what we've always done, which is surprise them with how quickly and efficiently we turn those plans around. So, so we're looking forward to, to digging in and starting to review those as soon as they come in. Goodman is coming in, actually has come in already with their submittal, not construction plans, but development plans for their third retail building that they're putting up in their retail center. With Costco now official and coming online and getting under construction soon, you're going to see a lot of other stuff happening. That's the catalyst that's going to make the whole rest of the retail center up there really come out of the ground. There's some other fun things coming up there and in other parts of the city that I can't announce yet, but look in that new and improved planning status report next month. Go to the end where the new projects are, and you'll see some fun stuff there. We do have, one thing I can tell you about is Lennar Homes, which is actively acquiring property all over the England Empire, is, has brought in their submittal pre-application for the property around the Bootsma home. So that, that will be a, the same project, well, same number of homes that they had approved before, different layout, so we're getting back to them with initial comments on that. And the other thing I'd like to announce, sitting next to me, is Kathy Perrings' replacement. I'd like to introduce Siri Champion. Siri is going to take over and fill Kathy's, Kathy's shoes and do a whole lot of stuff in planning, so you'll see her working on things like the streetlight program that Kathy spent a lot of time on, as well as handling some of our major development projects. Siri lives up in Big Bear Lake with her husband and their new son, who was born just a few months ago. So I'll let Siri to say a couple of words about herself, and then you'll definitely be seeing her again in the future.
Thank you for the introduction. Thank you, staff and council. Mayor Tesari. I, I'm really thankful for the opportunity to serve the City of Eastville. Really excited about all of the good work that's happened in the past and the great challenges and opportunities that are down the road. My background includes working on both sides of the counter as a consultant and as a staff member in local government, both at the county and the city level. But I've spent more time as a staff planner, and I really am passionate about working over the counter with our applicants to make sure that we see the, the best projects come out of the ground. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Anyone else? All right.
I'm, I'm sorry, I do have one last announcement that I forgot to share with you from a meeting today. We met with H T L, does our sales tax reporting. And I am pleased to announce that, once again, we have a very good quarter. And if you were to look at the data for the past thirteen consecutive quarters, we are up twenty-one point five percent.
Outstanding. Thank you. Any council communications?
Do we have public comments?
Yeah, we're going to go. So no comments? Anything? All right, seeing no comments, we're going to move on to public comments. Any member of the public can address the council on items, well, since we're done with the agenda. We're going to open up the floor for a public comment. If you have any- If you have anything good or bad to say, please direct it to, at the council and not staff. And if you want to speak, make sure you turn in a blue speaker card to the city clerk. Do we have any cards?
Yes, our first public comment card was received from Girl Scout Troop Six Six Two.
All right.
Hello, my name is Tori Boxer. I'm Courtney Bappertoli. And why do you come? Um, we are from Girl Scout Troop Six Six Two, and we've been together for nine years. And we are currently working on, as a troop, it's called the Silver Ward. And it's like a service project that consists of dedicating fifty hours of more and better in the community. And by accomplishing the Silver Ward, um, next year, we will be able to move on to our goal, which consists of a hundred hours. We are planning to work with the kids coming back cherry in the City of Eastvale to provide children with media with backpacks and clothes. We believe partnering with these people will give us the best possible results. And it will be the best way to make an impact in the community. We will be taking donations from now until December thirty-first. There will also be flyers in the back and at City Hall next to our donation box where you can put any donations inside. We appreciate you taking the time to listen to our project.
Thank you. Next card?
Yes, we actually received two public comment cards from Troop Six Six Two. I just want to confirm that there was, that was the same group. Thank you. The next public comment card was received from John Swain.
Mr. Swain?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, councilmembers. My name is John Swain. Since December of two thousand sixteen, I have taken great pride in cleaning the fourteen parks throughout the City of Eastvale while working for Shannon Homcolds, the owner of Jack's Quality Cleaning, a company subcontracted out by the City of Eastvale. I am here tonight to put the city on notice about the business practices of Shannon Homcolds. I was recently a victim of workplace violence when I was assaulted last Wednesday at Marana Heritage Park by another employee of hers named David Sanchez. This employee she claimed to have had a restraining order against and supposedly included the parks throughout the City of Eastvale and her employees. Come to find out, no restraining order was in place to protect her employees from this dangerous individual. As my employer, she had a responsibility to protect me from imminent harm and failure to do so put me at risk and harmless suffer. Because she had previous knowledge that the threat existed, she was directly negligent in exercising her standard duty of care over to her employees. While employed, I always worked hard and was really rooting for her to get her contract renewed, and she did. During the altercation on October the fourth of two thousand seventeen, I discovered she made a fake phone call to nine-one-one when David Sanchez slapped the phone out of her hand. When I picked the phone up, there was no one on the other end. She had dialed nine-two-three. So I ran to my truck and dialed nine-one-one myself. When Eastvale PD arrived on the scene, I attempted to press charges for assault until the officer said he would be impounding my vehicle if that's what I wanted to do. This was a torp committed by the officer for an intentional infliction of emotional distress, probably because he didn't want to do any paperwork, and this was conscious shopping to me. Additionally, Shannon Homcolds is claiming her employees are independent contractors. Not so. Most likely to avoid paying for workman's compensation and for criminal tax evasion purposes. Since working for Shannon, I've seen over twenty employees come and go. It takes time to train these individuals and let them go on their own and have confidence that the parks are getting done right. I really miss working out here and in conjunction with J C S D. Bill Lockwood and his crew of guys are great and not to mention a tremendous asset to the city. In closing, if you haven't already, you are likely to see a decline in the cleanliness of their parks until Shannon can get dependable, solid workers to handle the workload as expected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I, I have a quick question, just for clarification to staff. Is that one of our contractors? Is it contracted through J C S D?
Councilmember Rigby, the parks are owned and operated by Eurupa Community Services District. And we do not engage in any of their contracts, so that is not a contract of ours.
Thank you.
That would be directly between Eurupa Community Services District and the contractor that he mentioned.
One question. Did you by chance attend the board meeting yesterday that the J, or was it, yeah, yesterday that J C S D had?
No, I did not.
Okay.
I would recommend to contact J C S D directly.
Yeah, or, and, and maybe Rick Welch, who's in charge of the, the Parks, the Parks Director, so. You got it.
And again, just for clarification for the residents in, in attendance, we do have a special district here in the City of Eastvale, Eurupa Community Services District. And they own and operate all of the parks within the City of Eastvale's boundaries. East, west of Hamner to Helman. Anything between Hamner and the fifteen freeway is a, a second Parks District, which would be Eurupa Area Parks and Recreation. So it's a little complicated, but we do have two special districts in the City of Eastvale that oversee parks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Our next public comment form was received from Matt Woody.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have members of the council, the city staff. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight. My name is Matt Woody. As I have told many of the residents here, for me, I am a candidate for Congress in our district here. Councilmember Platt had an event a month or two ago, but the rest of you are new faces today tonight, so I'm glad to make your acquaintance. I was here sitting through the meeting, just trying to learn more about the city and some of the things you're, you're dealing with right now. Sounds like some of the standard growing pains of a new city, so, or a new world, if you should, should say. But it looks like you, you are all, you're all representing yourselves and your constituents by asking a lot of good questions. And so I, I wish you continued success as you move forward, move the city forward. I look forward to hopefully creating some positive relationships with you in, in the next several months. And hopefully, should I be elected by the citizens of this city and the district. And I'll just wrap it up there. And I hope to speak to as many of the residents who are in attendance at the meeting as possible. And, and it is, it is quite a good attendance you have. I've been to several other cities, sat in on their meetings as well. And they, they do not seem to turn out there, so you have a, a city of people that seem to really care about their citizens, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. Next.
Our next form was received from Dicky Simmons.
Ah, that guy again. Board Member Simmons, how are you, sir?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I just, I just have a general gripe. I just want to remind the councilmembers that you all work for us. And then when you make a phone call to one of you, you just have to answer. I had an occasion, the first part of my call, to come into information concerning our city. And I sent a message to our mayor and one of our other councilmembers that's not here. I never got a, a response back from any of the councilmen. And that's really disgusting. It makes me mad. And, I'm sorry. It's just, you know, I went to my councilmember, my district, just to seek out some information, and I never got a response. And I, I know all of you are all over there, and I know you were a smart person. And I don't know why, I didn't get an answer. And that's what really made me mad. But, I'm, I'm also on the waste management, because this is public here. I hope you all commit the next time, the next time the contract comes up. I tried to get, pick up my house, and we have so many limitations. I can't put stuff out on my front. They need to get, tie things up. And I have these signs that are, and I use them at the town hall signs, trying to get rid of them. I can't get them rid of them. And it's hard for citizens. And brings up a point. You should have seen the citizens in public comments at the beginning of all things. I almost saw a scene like that.
There's coffee in the back, Dicky. And cookies, and cookies.
I want to thank you all very much for everything. And I'm here to help resolve the sliding in this district. Because I want the city to have what belongs to the city. But I'm, I'm just one member of the, but, but knowing you got, got me in a fight. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it, sir. Yee-haw.
Thank you, Dicky.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Next.
Our next form was received from David Daslich.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to come. And formally introduce myself. My name is David Daslich. And earlier this year, I was hired on with the Building Industry Association as the Deputy Director of Government Affairs to join the team that's going to be interfacing with various city boards and jurisdictions throughout Riverside County. I'm very proud of the partnership that we maintain with the city. And I look forward to continuing that as we represent the city, family, home builders, and the city throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Any others?
Our next form was received from Don Pettinger.
Mr. Pettinger, challenging Dicky Simmons for citizen number one of Eastvale.
So, council, hello. Thank you for having me. I do want to remind Dicky that they did have a senior comment, and that was a Polly Pies of Green Pies.
That's right.
You were at home right now, Dicky, in bed. Thanks, city council.
Don, Don, can you do us a favor? Can you talk into the mic just because it's recorded? I know you have a, a good voice, but, thank you.
Witness protection, man. Uh, city council, thanks very much. Dicky, they had the senior comment moment this morning or this afternoon at Polly's Pies. It was funnier the first time. Anyway, city council, I just want to give you an update on the Neighborhood Watch program that's going on. Uh, so far, we have done seven different zones within our city. And we have talked to over five hundred citizens about the new Neighborhood Watch program. We're very excited. We also have four more that are already on the counter, two next week, one the following week, and one the following week. So it appears we have Neighborhood Watch meetings going one a week and until we get to thirty. We have twenty-nine zones in the city, and we reserved one zone for commercial business that we're going to work on now, be called Zone Fifteen. Uh, the replies we've been getting back are fabulous, and we're getting a lot of excitement throughout the city. Also wanted to let Captain Heinrich know that Debbie Myers is doing a great job. She's been out there helping us, really, uh, being a big fan of this. So it's really starting to pay off as we're starting to see on individual community pages also. That they're taking an interest, they're really trying to work together. And this is going to lay such a foundation for us when we get to thirty neighborhoods completely done, there's no stopping us. We'll have a foundation that we can go on to emergency management, we can go on to search, we can go on to community rescue. Uh, there's a lot of things that we can build from this. It's going to provide us the foundation. So just want to make sure you guys know what we're doing and where we are since we're in and out of some of your districts. And we always try to be transparent and keep you informed. I try my best to link you on everything that we do so that you're not surprised. And you are included with every single zone that we set up so that you can see what's going on in your city. Thanks so much, council.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Pettinger. Real, real quick. Real quick, Don, if you can stay up here, just for those of you that, that didn't know, Mr. Pettinger was really recently recognized by the Los Angeles County Fair as the Eastvale's resident. So we appreciate all that you've done for our community and all you continue to do.
Do we have any others?
Yes, our last form was received from Kenneth Cheng.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Cheng. I have an own complaint, and I agree very much.
Wow.
Oh, you're fine working in the city. Uh, I just wanted to bring to your attention that I live on, on, near Belgrave, uh, Belgrave, south of Belgrave. And there are a lot of trucks going up and down the street. And we have a complaint with the city of Ontario that they're not really doing anything. But we also mentioned that to Lieutenant Barnes. And a year ago, he was able to speak to the owner of the trucking company. And they didn't drive on the street anymore. But because the road is closed, so they are now driving on Belgrave, up and down into the night at eleven. Maybe they start at five A.M. in the morning. So it becomes a nuisance to many of us. And engineer Joe also referred many of us to Riverside County Sheriff. But they're not able to do anything. So I'm just wondering if there's any other way that you can get rid of that illegal trucking company right there? As I checked with the city engineer in, uh, City of Ontario, they say they don't have, uh, they don't have a right to be there if they are not zoned for, for trucking operation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll, we'll look into it. Any others?
That concludes public comment.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, to, to clarify, that's in reference to the parking area there at the end of Belgrave and Sumner? Is that what you're talking about? Okay. So have we, this is for staff, have we reached out to the City of Ontario regarding this issue? I think we did in the past. Have we done so recently?
Mayor Protem Lorimer, we have spoken and met with City of Ontario regarding this issue in the past. That trucking location that Mr. Cheng referred to is in the City of Ontario. That's not in Eastvale. And yes, because of construction on the, the extension of Sumner into what is the Ontario Ranch Project, it appears that the road closures in their, their jurisdiction have resulted in some increased trucking activity on Belgrave. We'll have to circle back around with Ontario to see, to see what, what can be done. That is a historical use. So although it may not be a, they may not have a license. I, I do recall there was, there was some sort of caveat that allowed them to operate until such time as the, and the project is built out. Uh, but we'll, we'll have to get back and, um, report out to Mr. Cheng.
Okay, uh, 'cause I, I see, I noticed that today in particular, they've actually torn up north of Belgrave on Sumner now. And so the only entrance is off of Belgrave. And they've opened up that side now, so I hope we can come to resolution. Thank you.
I was just going to say the same thing. They recently paved a new driveway there that is their only entrance exit, is right onto Belgrave now. And I know there was some significant grading that was done, so I don't know if that was... I mean, it's nothing to, I mean, it has to do with, but it's not permitted by our city. So I, I'm not sure if it was a permitted thing that was done or not, but I, I live right there too, so.
I, I will have to check with our Public Works Department. That, that is, again, one of those roads where literally the middle of the road is the dividing line between the two jurisdictions. So the side where they built the, the entrance and did the paving and whatnot, that is the City of Ontario. So, so they wouldn't be required to pull any kind of encroachment permit or anything with us. Uh, but I will find out from Public Works. They have likely been in discussion. And since Joe has left us, I, I don't have an answer for you right this moment, but I will get back to you.
I just know at a time that when they originally opened that section up right there, it was not permitted. So they had to close it and they had to build it back. And so I don't know what they've done now, so, thank you.
We will find out and we'll get back to you.
All right. Well, with that, we're going to move on to item eleven point one, closed session, where we're going to discuss two items, which is public employee performance evaluation under Government Section five four nine five seven B one. That's the city attorney position. And also discuss significant exposure to litigation, and that's under Government Code five four nine five six dot nine B. Thank you all.